This committee of the whole meeting to order. The town of Aurora acknowledges that the Anishinaabe lands on which we live and work are the traditional and treaty territory of the Chipewas of Georgina Island, as well as many other nations whose presence here continues to this day. As the closest First Nation community to Aurora, we recognize the special relationship the Chipewas have with the lands and waters of this territory. They are the water protectors and environmental stewards of these lands, and as a municipality, we join them in these responsibilities. We further acknowledge that Aurora is part of the treaty lands of the Mississaugas and Chipewas recognized through Treaty Number Thirteen, as well as the Williams Treaties of nineteen twenty-three. Shared understanding of the rich cultural heritage that has existed for centuries and how our collective past brought us to where we are today will help us walk together into a better future. Also, can I get a motion to approve the agenda with the additional item? Counselor Thompson, Counselor Kim? Any comments, questions? Call a vote, all those in favor? Posed? That carries? Any declarations of peculiar interest? Seeing none, we have no community presentations. We have the one delegation which was added, Aaron Kilbride regarding Mackenzie Marsh Rate Payers Association sixty-five St. John's Side Road Development. Aaron? Welcome. I can just get you to state your name again, and then you have five minutes. Thank you.
I won't take that long this time.
Okay.
So my name is Erin Kilbride. Hello, council members. Happy New Year to your, I think, first real one back. So I am here tonight as a representative of the Mackenzie Marsh Rate Payers Association, which is in Ward One. And we're here just to remind council of the community's concerns surrounding the application and the potential development at sixty-five St. John's Side Road. Members and residents of our association have been communicating with the town planner on the subject without much satisfaction. We have represented ourselves and our points at the O L T hearings as participants and are currently waiting to find out the status of the application from the developer and town, which is due at the O L T by the end of this month. As we are aware, the secondary set of plans were approved in principle at the last O L T hearing in August of twenty twenty-four. And this was based on the town and region's conditions being met, yet despite many requests, we've continued to be left in the dark by the town and its planner as to what these conditions specifically are. A major point of contention for us is still the environmental impact study submitted by the developer. This document alone is probably the biggest red flag here. The absurdity of claims made in this document are beyond my comprehension. Several of the species at risk animals are marked on this study as not present, yet the town installed posters and even flashing signs that tell us these animals are there. The developer has either report and has checked the boxes and has no concerns. So sure, let's just ignore every other piece of evidence to the contrary because of this report has said so. As your constituents, we want to remind council that after reviewing the bits of information we have been provided, there are still many concerns surrounding the plans specifically relating to the conservation and protection of the marsh, both during and post-construction. While we appreciate that this process is now out of your hands while at the O L T, we also recognize your duty to work with the town's departments to ensure that they are doing what's best for Aurora and, in this case, a protected space. I can confidently say that the residents are all very disappointed with the decision and not to mention the overall process in which these applications take place. We are still in opposition to the proposed development on this site and would appreciate and expect your support for the marsh by way of holding the town's planning department accountable. There is an online petition that was brought to your attention by a fellow resident, Trish Lear, back in July of twenty twenty-four, which now has over three hundred, three thousand, four hundred signatures in favor of protecting this marsh. We've seen numerous news articles about this site, and even everyone's beloved local cartoonist Scott Johnson has penned a few poignant pieces on the matter, my favorite being the one of the two bulldozers, which I did send. I don't know if you have it. It's a great one. I don't know if it's a no? Okay. So it's a great cartoon, and and I think it says a lot to this issue. Overall, this entire development plan has been poorly received by many. It does not help any of the issues the town is facing financially, infrastructurally, or ecologically, and it certainly does not help the housing crisis at a million or more to buy in. So I hope that this message serves as a reminder to you as the O L T deadline of January twenty-eighth approaches that our neighborhood and many, many others are still hoping that you'll pull the proverbial rabbit out of the hat and do whatever is in your power to protect the marsh and uphold the integrity of our town and its people. There are many eyes interested in seeing the outcome of this project and how it was handled by council and staff. We'd like you, as our representatives, to send a message to the developers in our town that they cannot be irresponsible, short-sighted, or negligent here. If they want to develop, they must do it right, and we will hold them accountable. Following procedure, policy, and checking boxes are not always the best practices for success. So I also ask that you look beyond the standard of duty here and follow up with Mr. Ramuno and the planning department to see that our proper due diligence, responsibility, and thought have been done in this process. I stress again, thought. As we can see just from that E I S report, checkboxes, don't always tell the full story. Thank you. And that's the cartoon.
Thank you. Thanks, Council. Can I get a motion to receive the delegation? Counsel Reese, thank you. Second, or Counsel Thompson? Questions, Counsel Reese? Oh, Ms. Kilbride, just get you to come back, just in case there's a couple of questions for you. Yeah, we don't let you get away that easy.
Not much of a question. Thank you, Mayor. Not much of a question, but through you, just want to thank you for coming here, representing the new Mackenzie Marsh Rate Payers Association. You've bonded very well, and I'm thankful for seeing some of the others here, and I wish you well, and you know that you have my support on this journey that you're you're going through. So thanks for coming and keeping us top of mind for people.
Thank you. Any other questions? Oh, Counsel Gardner? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've lost my hand up icon. Yes, there are many things that were sent to us in an email recently, many questions. And I would like them answered, and I'd also like to see the paperwork on it. So through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Ramuno. I know you received that email. I'm looking forward to your answers to the questions. Thank you.
You? Any other questions for the delegate? Seeing none, Ms. Kilbride, thank you very much. Call a vote, all those in favor? Posed, that carries? Council Advisory Committee Meeting Minutes, someone want to move those? Counsel Thompson, Counsel Reese? Any comments or questions on those ones? Counsel Reese?
Yes, thank you. Through you, Mayor. I look was looking through the mayor's golf classic minutes, and I just think there's a typographical error. Maybe the clerk can pick it up. It looks like nobody was there because members absent. And then members absent, so I'm sure that should be members present, so just make sure it's
Thank you. I'm sure the clerk will clean that up. Thanks for advising him, Counsel. Any other comments or questions? Call the vote, all those in favor? Posed, that carries? Consent agenda. We have two items. Someone like to move those two items? Counsel Reese, thank you. Second, or Counsel Gallo, thank you. Any comments or questions on these ones? Counsel Reese?
Yes, thank you. We received a petition, which is eight point two. And I'm just wondering, and I was talking to one of the residents today about this, so the question came up because they, of course, believe that since everybody on Murdoch is interested in having this done, if they, there could be an explanation of that whole process and how it came to be declined, just so it's on public record. So through you, probably to
Maybe we can, Mr. Ramuno, can you provide that maybe for council? Maybe get a memo on the on the council agenda? Would that be good, Counsel Reese?
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Call the vote, all those in favor? Posed? That carries? Hey, moving to the regular, any items anyone wants pulled? Counsel Gardner?
All of them, thank you.
You want all of them pulled? Okay. Eleven point one. Counsel Gardner, you pulled this one. Will you move it, the recommendation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you'll just give me a minute to get my escribe. Uh, yes, I will move it.
Seconder? Counsel Thompson, thank you. Go ahead, Counsel Gardner, you have?
I've really nothing to say, but I would like to hear. Maybe staff could give a quick summary for those of the public who are listening.
A summary of what? Counselor, I mean, the agenda, I think, speaks for itself. The item speaks for itself, but if you don't have a question or the summary, I mean, I'll let Counsel Thompson as a question. I can ask him the, if you don't have a question. Thank you. Counsel Thompson, go ahead.
Thank you. I spoke with Mrs. Wayne Ray Van Kessel already about this, but perhaps she can also, for the public. There is a difference between the P S A B standards as well as opposed to what we normally do through the budget process. If you look at Attachment Two, it shows that we're in a deficit position, but that's not necessarily, I guess, an accurate portrayal, and I was hoping that perhaps Mrs. Wayne Ray Van Kessel can sort of explain the difference between the two and and whether or not we're really in a deficit.
Ms. Wayne Ray Van Kessel?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So as you've seen through the budget process, we do the budget on a modified accrual basis, and that accounts for all our inflows and outflows of cash. When we move over to the P S A B standard, one of the things it does is it recognizes our different types of inflows very differently. So there's things that are identified as revenues on our budget, but they are not considered revenues on P S A B. Some of those include transfers from reserves, so all our tax and water-funded reserves. The revenues are recognized in the year we collect them, but we may hold them in reserves for a number of years before we actually use them. For P S A B, the revenues have already been recognized in prior years. If we're building a number of projects which happen to use development charges or grants, those are deferred revenues, so you don't actually get to recognize those until the years you actually use them. So it really adjusts a lot of the timing, and then it incorporates other items such as amortization. Whereas when we do the budget, we recognize the full cost of the project on hand. One thing I will say is the budget includes that reserve projection and our forecast on our reserve health, and that is a much more accurate picture on our long-term sustainability.
Counsel? Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Call a vote, all those in favor? Posed, that carries eleven point two. Counsel Gardner, you pulled this one. Do you want to move the recommendation?
Uh, yes, I will.
Seconder? Counsel Thompson, do you have something for this one, Counselor?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to know how that, how Rogers was awarded this. Rogers is a fairly new carrier for the town. As we know, there was a big problem with the Rogers shutdown. I think that was last year. So how is staff sure that this is the right way to go for this?
Ms. Wayne Ray Van Kessel?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the Rogers contract, what we are looking to do is piggyback on the contract that Rogers has with the province of Ontario. It is a very good contract. It gives us extremely good pricing. The, what we refer to as those Rogers days where things were out for a couple of days, there have been changes by the C R T C, which now requires other carriers to pick up services when one carrier goes down. So those types of situations should not be as much of an issue in the future going forward, regardless of which carrier gets impacted at that time.
Counselor?
Thank you. I'm glad to know that. Yes, that makes sense. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel Kim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Ms. Wayne Ray Van Kessel. It's obvious through the the table, the savings, it's 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 pretty substantial, and I have no opposition to it.
You can't come back here. Sir, you can't come back here. Counsel Kim, go ahead, sorry.
Thank you. So just a quick question. Prior, when we were using Tellus, you know, a couple of terms ago, did the vendor record exist? Because I don't recall using provincial vendor format, but which is great, but just just curious whether that existed back then.
Ms. Wayne Ray Van Kessel?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So a number of years ago, Tellus used to be the vendor of record for the province. It did change to Rogers, which is what my move, which is the reason why we moved to Rogers a few years ago. And the town did recognize a significant amount of savings at that point in time. And now the new contract that the province has is ten-year contract with Rogers, and it does have even more advantageous pricing.
Counselor?
That's good. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Call a vote, all those in favor? Posed? That carries? Thirteen point one, Counsel Gardner, you pulled this one. Do you want to move the recommendation?
Thank you, I will.
Seconder? Counsel Kim, thank you. Counsel Gardner, go ahead.
I'm glad to see that this was approved. I would ask Mr. Colangelo, but I don't believe he's in town, so I could ask next week, but I'd like to be sure that the Lake Simcoe Conservation Authority's report on parking lots and salt is being followed. I don't know who's sitting in for Mr. Colangelo at the table. This is a question I could ask.
Ms. Miss Teeng Cap?
Oh.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Certainly, yes, it's a it's a separate issue, the salt management plan through L S R C A, but we do follow it closely.
Thank you. Sorry, Ms. Teeng. So so the recommendations that were in that plan, which at this point are maybe ten years old, all of that is going to be followed in this project?
Miss Teeng Cap?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, the recommendations through L S R C A are related to salt management and salt application and salt collection within parking lots. So when we do a full reconstruction of parking lots, those considerations are taken into the reconstruction of the lot. Anything that within this report is for maintenance of the parking lot, so it's crack filling, fixing of catch basins and things, and certainly when catch basins are repaired and things, then there's some salt mitigation efforts that go into that.
Counselor?
Thank you. And capital renewal means redoing parking lot surface?
Miss Teeng Cap?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Capital renewal is a full reconstruction of the parking lot. Capital, the rehabilitation and maintenance is just our yearly maintenance that we perform on parking lots. So that could be crack sealing, lines, heaving of curbing, things like that.
Thank you. I'm just asking because the second bullet in the executive summary says, and capital renewal resulting. So I believe that that conservation plan also had a bit of sloping in the pavement towards the catch basin that would hopefully collect more salt. Is that, am I remembering that correctly? And are we doing that?
Miss Teeng Cap?
Certainly, engineering, when they do a full reconstruction, those are considerations that are taken into the planning and the design of the lots.
Thank you very much. Sorry, didn't have a chance to call earlier.
Thank you. Counsel Reese?
Yeah, my only interest is at this. I look at everything else, but the the budget is increased by more than double. So if you could just comment a bit on where that is being spent and why it's it's been doubled? Through you, Mayor, to Ms. Teeng Camp, I assume?
Ms. Teeng Cap?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So to clarify, this is a multi-year budget, capital budget. So we requested funding in twenty twenty-four, which council approved, and we completed the works with the funding that was approved in twenty twenty-four, as indicated in the report. We had a request for funding in twenty twenty-five, which is, this is the report that's asking you to lift that condition. So that is the additional two hundred and fifty thousand for this year. And then there's an additional ask in twenty twenty-six, which will come forward to council for approval in twenty twenty-six on continued maintenance as per the asset management plan.
So this is just over two years and a little bit of three, perhaps. So that's the rationale for that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Call a vote, all those in favor? Posed, that carries? Fourteen point one, Counsel, you pulled, Counsel Gardner, you pulled this one. Did you want to move the recommendation?
No, thank you.
Counsel Thompson, thank you. Second, Counsel Gallo. Go ahead, Counsel Gardner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is in my ward, and there have been a lot of problems.
Counsel, I don't think you're on the right one. This is the community planning permits, the project information report. This is for the downtown promenade area.
Yes, thank you. Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. With this, it's talking about, I think there is zoning things. I mean, in our official plan, we've already established the height. I thought that setbacks have already been established through the zoning bylaw, but I couldn't find that today. So through you to staff, what would we expect the result of this report? What would the buildings look like apart from the setback after the second floor? Are these buildings going to be, it said zero? These buildings are going to be right up against the sidewalk? Through Mr. Mayor, if staff could speak to that, and are there, is there going to be room for outdoor patios to be allowed? I know this is, we're going to be working on this, but I think probably staff has some ideas of what they'd like to see.
Yeah, Mr. Ramuno and Counselor, this is this part of the C P P that was forward through legislation at the province that allows us to implement that, which we have through our O P. We added it in that we were going to be doing this. We've also approved it through the budget process. It was adopted, and we're moving forward with it. This is to work with residents, business owners, property owners, everyone to develop a, essentially, a a plan for this specific area that would allow for essentially anyone to move forward and just move forward with a building permit as long as they adhere to the the community permit plan. But I'll allow Mr. Ramuno to expand upon that if I didn't get that correctly. Mr. Ramuno?
No, to you, Mr. Mr. Mayor, exactly correct. It's really an information report, just to advise council that we are taking off the public consultation process this year. It's really an urban design exercise dealing with the build form on the private side. This aligns with our promenade, downtown promenade official plan, also the ongoing promenade streetscape study. So yes, it's a design exercise that will establish community planning permit system is a new, relatively new planning tool that essentially combines or consolidates the zoning bylaw, site plan, exercise, and, you know, any minor variance into one community planning permit system to streamline a process to incentivize development within that historic main downtown core.
Counselor?
Thank you. With respect to I thought that we could not dictate urban design guidelines. That's what we learned in the staple neighborhoods plan. Is this we will be setting out so that the developer will know they will have to conform to the designs that we serve and design guidelines that we, as a town, assert?
But I'll let it, Mr. Ramuno, expand upon this, but but Counselor, so whatever the community permit plan comes out with, it's a set of essentially a new, I guess you could say, new zoning or new new a planning for that specific area at the same time that does not stop anyone from coming forward and putting something that goes above and beyond or asking for something different. It's just that if they do ask for something different than the C P P, then they would have to follow through with a with a full public planning application, whereas if they follow the C P P, then they just go building permit site. So it streamlines the process for people that want to adhere to our new plan for that specific area.
Thank you. So the developers will know upfront what we expect from them.
Exactly.
What I'm getting from you. Thank you. On page two, the last bullet, it says development conditions that are required to be met in any new development, such as affordable housing opportunities or public art. I'm not, I'm not happy with the word you got required to be met in the sentence. And and then also the opportunities word. So we're requiring things, but we're also giving opportunities for affordable housing. We're not requiring that as one of the conditions. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Ramuno.
Mr. Ramuno?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. As part of the process, the community planning permit process will determine whether we want to attach any conditions to the new permit process, and that could be provision of community benefits, public art, affordable housing, but that's something that will work out. And again, some of these provisions are already in our official plan at a higher level.
Counsel?
Thank you. Final statement on this. When we do the public consultation, I'm sure that people will come forward with affordable housing. So I think that will be a big one. So just saying to staff, that's something we should expect. And last one, page two, with the milestones, there's a public open house in Q two twenty twenty-five and a public engagement meeting. I'm glad to see they're in Q two. But I would prefer that they weren't towards the end of June because a lot of people go away. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Reese?
Hold of comments. The, and a question or two, the I don't see anywhere here in the stakeholders that have identified, and I'm, I hope it's implied that we would have builders and developers that are going to be part of the public consultation here. It's just not stated there. I just wanted to ask if that was going to be stated specifically through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Ramuno?
Mr. Ramuno?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, and as we kick off the public consultation, we'll, you know, deal with our webpage, social media. We'll inform all the property owners within the area and surrounding area. We've already heard from one of the property owners within the downtown who wants to be engaged as well, is interested in the process. So it certainly will do the proper public consultation as we move forward.
Counsel?
Yeah, thank you. And the other one was the geographic boundaries, and this is a pilot, is it not, that something that we're testing in that particular geographic location? But the intent of this is to pilot this, refine it, have it approved, and then expand it to the rest of the town. It's not just for that promenade, that area, the promenade, is it? Or could you help me with that?
Mr. Ramuno?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, these areas are these community planning permit systems are really focused in on downtown areas where you want to include incentives specifically with the streamlined permit process. It's not really intended to to cover the entire municipality, because again, it is an urban design exercise. The other area that we may want to consider is perhaps, you know, other areas of the promenade. But again, it's not going to apply to neighborhoods, because again, it's really, you're focusing on areas that we expect to be redeveloped over time.
So you, so you could consider going up Wellington Street or on Wellington Street East because there's a mix of residential and and commercial there?
Yeah, and so, Counselor, I think the the idea when the province brought it forward was to, as Mr. Ramuno mentioned, to identify specific key areas within a municipality that you would streamline the process for those specific areas, not do a municipal-wide thing. Essentially, our official plan is our municipal-wide plan, right? So these ones would be specific to certain areas, similar as we have like the promenade plan, which is a secondary plan to what we have from through the official plan, so.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Gardner, second time?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for some clarification, usually when we do public consultation, we're interested in finding out what our residents want, not what the developers want. So to Counsel Reese's question, will we be first finding out what our residents and businesses want and then running that by the developers, or will the developers running that by the developers or will the developers be upfront in process?
Mr. Ramo?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, it'll, uh, the public consultation will be open townwide, communitywide. Of course, the uh, the property owners within the proposed community planning permit system are, are going to be key as well because uh, we're targeting this uh, new system uh, within properties that they own. We're dealing with the private wa- realm. But again, it aligns with our, our official plan, but also our ongoing promenade streetscape study, which we're uh, which is underway now, dealing with that portion of Young Street, the sidewalk, sidewalks and the street furniture, et cetera. But again, the public consultation will be townwide.
Councillor?
Thank you, um, Mr. Ramuno. And yes, of course, I understand if somebody owns a building. Uh, you know, we want their input. Uh, but I'm, but that's not developers at large. That's developers who are situated in whatever to reside or the boundaries. I think that's appropriate. Um, and as far as the streetscape study goes, I mean, we've been back and forth at council with this for maybe fifteen years. I'm not sure where it sits at this moment. How has council decided on a final streetscape plan?
Mr. Ramo?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, no, that study is currently underway.
Councillor?
Again, okay, so it will be coming to council.
Okay, thank you.
That, that was a question. It will be.
Yes, so Mr. Ramino?
Probably later, later on this year. Again, we just commenced that with our consultants.
Thank you. Councillor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor. Post carries. Fourteen point two, councillor, you pulled this one. Did you want to move the recommendation?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Someone want to move the recommendation? Councillor Thompson, councillor Kim, any comments, questions? Councillor Gardner, I'm assuming you want to say something. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yes, uh, I understand the warrants weren't met. But uh, the traffic is, well, it's almost all over town, but the traffic here is moving very quickly. And there's a lot more traffic in the area now with the new homes. So I know in the past we have made um an exception. So um, I can't vote for this at the moment. Um, hopefully we can. Hopefully, uh, the residents can work with staff again to see if there's anything better that uh, staff can come up with. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Call the vote. All those in favor. Post that carries. Fourteen point three. Councillor Gardner, you pulled this one?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh.
Do you want to move the recommendation?
I will.
Thank you. Seconder?
Uh, sorry.
Seconder? Councillor Kim, thank you. Go ahead, councillor.
The residents on Stone Road have been complaining about this for so many years. I, I don't know how many. I would say fifteen. Uh, I'm very glad to know that we're doing this. Um, and even if the warrants weren't met, I would have suggested we do do it because there's two schools on uh, Stone Road in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Thompson.
Thank you. Just to be clear, the motion in the report is to maintain the speed limit of fifty kilometers, and that's the motion that councillor Gardner has put forward?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll, I'll be clear. I'm, I'm not in support of that. Um, but I, I would if, if uh, the if we have a committee member on the traffic advisory committee that would mind, just sharing some of their thoughts because I read in the report that the traffic advisory committee recommended reducing it to forty kilometers. So I'm just curious if we have any feedback from the committee? Yeah, sorry, sorry. No.
Um, I don't know. No. We didn't have someone on that, on that one.
That's fine. So um, my apologies, councillor Gallo. Um, I guess my perspective is, is that, you know, what's the downside? I think we've all, at least myself, can say that we've all had complaints from residents and um, heard their experiences. I certainly did when, when I was, was door knocking uh, about the excessive speed. And I get it that the report comes back to us and says that technically, you know, this is the warrants that technically, you know, this is the recommendation, but I don't think that the technicality reflects the um, experiences of the residents in the area. And I look at what's the downside? It's, you know, a self-contained neighborhood in a sense, and reducing the speed limit to fifty to forty, yes, may take everybody an extra minute to get home as a result of it, but it provides a little extra comfort and a little bit extra safety for the residents who, for the most part, are the ones driving this, and they're the ones that see um, from their perspective, excessive speeds. There's two schools in the neighborhood. Um, certainly, there's lots of, you know, kids in the areas as well. And so I think to myself, what is the downside of reducing it from fifty to forty? So through you to Mr. Ramuno. Mr. Ramuno, is there any um, downside or negative impact if council decides to side with the residents? And, you know, while we appreciate the worker staff, make the decision to reduce the speed from fifty to forty?
Mr. Ramo?
Through, through you, Mr. Mayor, uh, no, if council directs staff to uh, uh, make that the speed limit along that entire stretch consistent, consistent down to forty, we'll, we'll bring back a parking uh, by law uh, for amendment and install the signage.
Thank you. And I, I think, you know, if, um, I can't say all of our residential streets, but I think if you look at the vast majority of our residential streets, they're forty. John Westway is forty right beside us right here. Um, you know, um, and while I get it that the construction of Stone Road is, is wider and, and built to handle more traffic, at the same time, I still see it as a neighborhood road. And so my preference is that it would stay, and that it would keep with the rest of Stone Road and be forty kilometers an hour.
Thank you. Councillor Reese?
I'm in agreement with uh, that perspective as well. The moving from forty to fifty and back to fifty, uh, it doesn't make any sense. We went through a a uh, community safety zone evaluation where we wanted to have all the schools with community safety zones. And although this is just slightly outside of those zones, um, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't move that to uh, forty. Uh, because it just doesn't make sense to have it up and down like that. So I'm, I'm in favor of uh, of m- moving it to the lower speed limit as well as uh, councillor Thompson suggested.
Thank you. Councillor Gallo?
Thanks, just to, to weigh in and in a, in agreement, um, perhaps more on the side of consistency rather than, than forty or fifty. To me, they, they would both work just fine, but I think uh, if um, there's a lot of merit in consistency along Stone Road. It is one road and, and the chances of someone, you know, identifying the different speed limits when they hit a particular area is, is going to be extremely low. Uh, so if, if it goes to forty, I, I have no issues with that, but we should maintain it uh, consistent across the, the whole street.
You. Any other comments, questions?
Um, I agree. I think for a procedural standpoint, uh, because it is on the floor, uh, but if this is what everyone wants to do, defeat what's on the floor. Okay, and then put forward the alternative essentially of councillor Thompson, I'll, I'll come back to you, okay? If this is defeated. So. Okay, let's, okay, so we'll vote on the first part, which is to receive. All those in favor? Post that carries in the second part, second clause, all those in favor? Post. That fails. Councillor Thompson? You have it ready?
It's essentially. We're just changing.
Essentially, yes.
The other one.
Yeah. Is that correct? Okay. Good. Seconder? Councillor Gallo, thank you. All those in favor?
Oh, oh, oh!
Yes, councillor Gardner. I thought that's what everyone wanted.
I just wanted, I've been trying to speak for the last five minutes. Thank you, councillor Thompson. Obviously, I completely misread this. Uh, your motion is exactly right. Thank you. Uh, and further to what councillor Gallo said, uh, are we going to make the whole street forty? Is that the intent?
Councillor Thompson?
What, what councillor Thompson's mic on? Sorry.
Or not?
Go ahead.
So I believe, and, and Mr. Ramuno can confirm it, the other parts are already forty because of the schools. And so, um, as councillor Gallo alluded to, it, in some ways, it wasn't consistent because parts of Stone Road were forty and the other part fifty. I think the intent now is to make the whole part of forty, but um, you know, we can all confirm it ourselves, and Mr. Ramuno can confirm it between now and council.
So, Mr. Ramuno, this, this will essentially make the entire stretch of Stone Road forty?
Correct.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I definitely need to go back and read this report. Thank you.
All those in favor? Post that carries fourteen point four, councillor Gardner, you pulled this one. Did you want to move the recommendation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ah, just give me a second. Uh, I, okay.
Thank you. Seconder? Mr. Reese, thank you. Go ahead, councillor.
Uh, I'm just want to express, I guess it's rage, that this was all settled uh, in two thousand and ten. And then it got reversed with the next council. And now we're in a position, we have to redo the technical assessment, which is going to cost us taxpayers extra money. I just, I just find this whole process outrageous. I'm glad it's back on the table. Um, and I'm very sorry that this report did not reference the earlier reports uh, two thousand and ten-ish, where we had already an agreement with the region to take care of the regional roads. So uh, it's very disappointing to me that the residents have had to listen to these train whistles. Uh, it's, it's there. It's very, very hard to have a quality of life if you live near these, uh, live near the train tracks. And also, um, I'm very unhappy that we're spending an extra, like, quarter of a million dollars to do the assessment again. But uh, no, I think I'm wrong. No, it's two hundred thousand. Uh, anyway, uh, thanks for, to councillor Reese for bringing this back again. Uh, but I do think that when we have reports and it says previous reports, all of the previous reports should be listed. Thank you.
You, councillor Reese?
Thank you to uh, the councillor also because uh, what I found in the report, although it was very accurate, and I thank the uh, town staff for bringing it forward, that identifies the uh, issues very clearly. And just, and it recommends a budget for the safety assessment. And my question, first question was, um, and I'm not sure where this goes. It may have to be through our legal counsel and, and elsewhere, but there's nowhere in the report that says that um, any of the safety standards or the assessment has changed since uh, even two thousand and twenty-two, when this uh, came back most recently. So if somebody could ask that or answer that question, that I, I'd appreciate that. Through you, Mayor, to not sure who, perhaps engineering, maybe.
Mr. Ramo?
Mr. Mayor, if I can ask our manager of engineering, capital delivery Nancy Fleming, to come down to the podium?
Thank you, Nancy.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Reese. We actually haven't not, we have not done a safety assessment as of yet. So the original, the safety assessment for St. John's Side Road was included in the two thousand and twenty-five capital budget ask. Um, and then when we were, when we went back to look at all the other four crossings, and this additional funding is to undertake the other three um, safety assessments that would have to be undertaken if we wanted to continue to consider whistle cessation at all four crossings.
Thank you. So this is just a matter of volume going from one to four, and so we are uh, duplicating what was done at uh, St. John's Side Road and applying the same, is it the same consultant? Is it the same um, uh, safety assessment that was done two years ago? Do you think, in your opinion? I don't know.
Nancy?
To councillor Reese, the safety assessment has not been done yet. So the region um, originally was going to undertake the um, construction for the requirements. Um, the metro links ended up go- going ahead and undertaking the construction for the region at St. John's Side Road. Um, but we still have to undertake the safety assessment. So that was the original um, understanding between us and the region. Uh, so now we are going to undertake the safety assessment. That money um, has been already approved through the two thousand and twenty-five capital budget. So that will be done for St. John's Side Road as the next step. If council um, chooses to undertake a safety assessment for the other three crossings, then this additional funding with a hundred and five thousand to a total of two hundred thousand dollars will allow us to undertake a safety assessment for all four crossings within the one study.
Alison?
Thank you. Um, and the uh, complication that this has, of course, is that um, uh, Center Street is our road, whereas Wellington is not our road. It's the regional road. So uh, we may be doing the, the, the um, the region do their own assessment for St. John's that directed them to do whatever changes they made uh, in advance. How would they know what to do at each of these sites if they didn't have some guidelines on what is going to be successful from a safety assessment? Through you, Mayor?
Nancy?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, uh, to councillor Reese. So they hadn't even gotten to that step yet because metro links had undertaken the work at um, at St. John's. So.
So we didn't want to discourage them from doing that.
So the work's been undertaken. You can see the pedestrian signals, the tactile plates, the maze barriers have all been included. So now we just have to undertake that safety assessment to make sure that everything has been done um, adequately before we move on to the next step for the train whistle cessation at St. John's.
Yes. So while the motion looks like it's about stopping train horns, in my mind, the motion is really about making each one of our uh, level crossings safe to the highest standards. And so that's why I'm looking for the safety assessment first to get that done, to identify what needs to be done in here. And then should we need upgrades, which I'm quite sure we're going to, then we can come back for an additional budget item to say we want to, to complete that. And that will be another motion at another time to spend the money for the upgrades. And my hope is that we will find partners such as uh, Metro Links and the region that has happened elsewhere in the region and elsewhere to be able to uh, to help us out from a budgetary standpoint. And then and only then will we come back again to council at some time to get a bylaw that would allow us uh, to send the um, um, thi- this to uh, Transport Canada and perhaps have the cessation. So I think this is a, a multi tiered thing, and I'm glad you focused on the assessment and the costs of getting the assessment done prior because that's really what this is all about. And I'm ho- I'm going to vote for it naturally, but I hope others will support this as well because I think our residents want to have the safest crossings that they can. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Call the vote. All those in favor? Post that carries fourteen point five, councillor Gardner, you pulled this one?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Move the recommendation?
Uh, no, I won't. Thank you.
Someone want to move the recommendation? Councillor Reese, thank you. Councillor Gallo, seconder. Councillor Gardner, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first of all, I'm not sure why this is at council. And second of all, uh, I don't remember when we considered this. Does everything that's in the design and the uh, building footprint, uh, it is in settlement area, conform with the Oak Bridges Marine Settlement Plan? Oakr- Oak Bridges Marine Conservation Plan Settlement Area. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Ramuno.
Ramuno?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the uh, zoning subdivision site plan were approved a couple of years ago. The thirty-two units are built. Uh, this is just the standard typical final step for council approve the uh, draft plan condominium to deal with the uh, tenure of ownership.
Councillor?
Thank you. Um, my question wasn't answered though.
Could you restate the question, councillor?
I just wanted to know if all of the conditions in the Oak Bridges Marine Conservation Plan Settlement Area were adhered to?
Through you, Mr. Through you, Mr. Mayor, um, page three in the report, subject lands are. Page three in the report, subject lands are within the two C secondary plan. And this parcel are not, they're not located within the Oak Bridges Marine Conservation Plan. Part of the two C development area.
Thank you. I thought it says somewhere in here that was, it was in the settlement area. Oh, it's in the, okay, I'll have another read for next week. I thought it was in the Oak Bridges Marine. Thank you. So, so I looked at the conditions. I don't know which appendix it was. Mr. Moreno, we often have conditions to the developer. How do we ensure that the conditions are followed? Is, is it planning staff? Is it building staff? Who actually goes over to? Well, this is these conditions are for the future or these conditions already met?
Mr. Ramon.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, because this is a draft plan of condominium, very, just a couple of minor conditions dealing with the condominium ownership. But because the units are built, the site plan agreement was entered into a couple of years ago. So prior to issuance of a billing permit, we ensure that's all of staff. The project manager on these planning files are the planners. But along with the planners, our engineers, park staff, regional staff, conservation authority staff, whoever, whichever agency has conditions of approval that are originally imposed on a development, they're responsible to ensure that they are satisfied to that department's satisfaction. And those letters are, are sent to the planning department for final clearance. But again, all departments are involved, also our legal department.
Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Moreno. There is a note from the Engineering Division. I'm, I'm, I shouldn't assume, but a certificate from the owner. We have the engineering report that has been done and we agree with that. I mean, when it says conditions, it doesn't say they've been met. These are conditions that have to be met. So.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Again, because this is a draft plan of condominium, the conditions aren't related to the actual development. There may be some obligations that need to be dealt with after the fact, like final landscaping. But the primary conditions would have been attached to the site plan agreement. And again, that goes back a couple of years ago. But these, these buildings are constructed in all conditions have been, have been met.
Thank you. So the appendix on the conditions is basically just for information.
Mr. Ramon.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Again, just to be clear, this appendix, Schedule A, are conditions related to the condominium application. So again, some of those still need to be met. But again, they're final surveys, survey, the condominium declaration needs to be submitted. Engineering certificates related to servicing works would need to be submitted. But again, because this is a draft plan of condominium, all the infrastructure works have been constructed and have been signed off by our engineering.
Counselor.
Thank you. I'm just, perhaps I'm being picky, or perhaps I've been on council too long. It says the draft plan of common elements condominium, da, 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 be approved, subject to the conditions attached heretofore as Schedule A. So we are asking council tonight to approve this subject to the conditions on Schedule A. And not all those conditions have been met, but we, they are expected to be met. Am I understanding that correctly?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That's correct. Once council issues the draft plan of condominium approval with these conditions attached, staff, various departments will work with the developer to ensure that those are finalized before they can actually register the plan of condominium, which would be, which then puts them in a position to finalize the sales of those individual units within that plan of condominium to those purchasers.
Counselor.
Thank you. Last question. Why wouldn't it be the other way around? Why wouldn't everything be satisfied and then this comes to council?
Mr. Ramon.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Again, just because this is a draft plan of condominium, the development has occurred, construction has happened. There was a previous site plan agreement with conditions that the developer had to satisfy. And there were probably a hundred conditions attached to those site plan agreements. This is just the final step dealing with the tenure of ownership in a condominium. And so the, the town hall units need to be substantially complete before a surveyor can get in there to do the final plans with the final dimensions. And it's basically dealing with the interior walls.
Thank you. And the way the provincial law goes now, council doesn't see those site plans in all of the conditions. That's left up to the planning department. Just be yes or no.
Mr. Ramon.
That's correct, but council would have seen this one because this one goes back a couple of years.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moreno.
Okay, Counselor Gallo.
Thank you. Speaking to the motion on the floor, two things. First of all, this, this is, all of these conditions are related to, to establishing a condominium, separating all the thirty-two units, developing a declaration, everything that's necessary in order to establish a condominium corporation. That's what's before us right now.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Correct.
And I am, as everyone knows, no fan of delegated authority. But what, through you, Mr. Mayor, what if we were to say no to this?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That's council's prerogative. But again, we're just dealing with the tenure of ownership. So then the owner would have to, you know, appeal council's lack of decision of, for, in approving the condominium.
This is one of those things that's, in my view, administrative, that does not belong at this council table. A site plan should belong at this council table. That's been removed. This, we still have authority to, to make a decision. It makes absolutely no sense.
So, and Counselor, I was just gonna, I, I believe unless I, I heard Mr. Ramon incorrectly, I think he said this one is in front of us because it's grandfather, because it's an older one, or these will continue to come?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize. I thought, yes, I thought I heard him.
Yeah, the site plan of this was before us because it predates when that was mandated to give delegated authority. So anyways, I have no issues with this. Can't imagine anyone has any issues with this. Even if we did have issues with this, what would we do about it? Absolutely nothing. This is a standard procedure that, again, should be administrative, should not be at this council.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I was just gonna say, Counselor Gallo, I, I agree. I mean, if, if there was something that the province wanted to cut some bureaucracy and red tape, this is one of those ones that they could definitely have taken out of the hands of councils having to go through this. As we can see how much time we spent on it and the fact that this could have already been taken care of and probably, you know, the development could be occurring instead of sitting here waiting for us to decide this specific issue, which is, as you mentioned, administrative. Call the vote. All those in favor. Post that carries sixteen point one, York Region Council highlights from December. Someone want to move that? Counselor Thompson, Seconder, Counselor Kim, any comments or questions? Counselor Gardner?
No, I was just going to second it. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Seeing none, all those in favor. Post that carries new business. Counselor Kim? Counselor Gallo, Counselor Thompson, Counselor Reese?
Maybe a couple. The, I brought this up before, but over the holidays and with the, what's happening at the ATS, there's more activity. That means brings more parking problems. I've had a few residents asking about parking hash, the hash marks in there and all the rest of the things that go along with it. And, and Mrs. Teen Camp has helped me out with a couple of issues that are related to the church, et cetera. Can I get an idea of when the parking study is going to come back? I brought it, I mentioned it before, but is it coming up in?
Mr. Ramon.
Q.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Again, we're in the middle of it. I think later on this year. Yeah, I can provide a more definitive date to council tomorrow, but just speaking to Nancy, we're later on this year, mid-year.
Counselor.
I realize it's a big job and because it takes over all of the, the community. But the biggest problem that I see is around town park area, the ATS area. Is there any way to chunk this out a bit so that we could go area by area if necessary? So we could solve some of the issues that are, will I hope be coming up in latter part of spring, summer and into the early fall is through you to, maybe Mr. Bruno or maybe Nancy. I'm not sure who could, if that's possible.
Well, to Mr. Ramon, I'll add, Counselor, as you know, we've, we've had discussions on this. And I, I've sat down with Mr. Ramon a couple of times in regards to this specific issue. I agree with you. We're trying to see, are there any opportunities that we can do some of the smaller things that we've discussed around Town Square area, Town Park area, to put them immediately in place. As we know, this is an area that we want to make sure becomes a thriving area for the town. We want to make sure there's no issues when it comes to parking, anything that we can do to minimize any of those issues the better. So if we can implement things sooner, that'll be good. I'll continue to work with Mr. Ramon and Nancy. I'm looking at what we can do and I'll keep you up to speed on that so you can let the residents in the area know.
Because there's some particular hotspots, particularly at Edward Street, Metcalf, and then down further off of Metcast, Metcalf and Victoria, that, that's creating a hazard, frankly. And I just think there's some priority maybe you could put together, but I'm happy to have your input and work on it on an individual basis if that, that works.
Absolutely.
The other one that came up, of new business, that you sent a letter of your meeting with MetroLinks. And I a hundred percent agree with your position taken on that. But when I, it's not a big but. When I was working with the Community Construction Liaison Committee with MetroLinks, they said that something would be coming back in the fall and would go to the mayor first. And then it would become public knowledge. The, my problem is that I've had residents ask about this, mainly because it's in Ward One. It's in a very hot spot now with traffic, et cetera. And that's why I agree a hundred percent with what you wrote. But is it possible for you to identify their rationale, why they decided to reject this particular?
Sorry, they haven't rejected anything. I just felt that a strongly worded letter to the CEO, since a new CEO has come in, because Mr. Phil Vister has stepped down. I felt that the new CEO needed to understand the importance of approving this in a timely manner. So they haven't said one way or the other. I just that this is a, a good opportunity to send a strong worded letter to them as well as let them know that I'll be sitting down with the Minister of Transportation to make sure that they're aware of the complexities of, of the issue at hand on Wellington by the go.
That's very good news and I thank you for that extra bit of detail because it sounded to me that there was a rejection.
I pause again.
We were in a advocacy torch and other things.
There's no approval or, or denial. I, I just believe that the approval needs to come sooner rather than later. It would be best for everyone involved if MetroLinks just came out and said, yes, we're doing it. This is when we're looking at doing it, instead of leaving us in limbo.
Thank you, because they said they were going to have this system-wide assessment of all their level crossings. And that's why, and they were going to come back to us in the fall. And I figured, okay, there it is. And when I got that letter, I kind of felt that it was, it was bad news.
We would have talked, we would have talked on Monday, but unfortunately, we.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for sending a letter and advocating for that because it's critical to the community.
Absolutely. Anything else?
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Gardner, new, new business?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My understanding and that of the residents seems is that the sport plan update would be on the January fourteenth agenda. I think that was the messaging. So it's not. I didn't have a chance to speak to staff before the meeting. And I can't see whose attendance for staff. So is there any response that I can give to the residents who are expecting that update?
I, I believe our director's not in, in the audience at this moment in time, but I believe it's coming, a clerk is telling us it's coming February eleventh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I don't believe that was the messaging that was sent out originally, but February eleventh. Okay, thank you. I was looking at the, the York Region information. And one of the things that was mentioned was the, the land trust, housing for all land trust. I know Mr. Braithwaite came to council in, I think it was December or November. I'm wondering if Mr. Moreno, what the ask was that he meet with you to see if we might have any available land. Could I have an update on that?
Ramon.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I, myself and Adam Robb did meet with Michael before the, before Christmas and just interested in working with us to determine whether we have, if there's any ability to to work with him with respect to finding landlands for the land trust for affordable housing, either lands that the town may have or a private developer. So we'll have those ongoing discussions into, into this new year and we'll do, we'll do our best to work with Michael. And if there's any opportunities, we'll definitely bring them to his attention and obviously again, to council's attention.
Thank you. It's been bitterly cold. And I don't know how there are reports of people dying. But anything that we could do, Mr. Moreno, would be the right scene. With respect to the financials on Town Square, again, I thought it was going to be presented in this cycle. Ms. Wayne Roy Van Castle, can you say when that's coming?
That, Counselor, that'll be coming in February.
February eleventh?
Yep.
Going to be a big agenda.
It's gonna be great news, too.
For the, what I was asking for last year was information on expenses and income for our Young Street strip mall. Could I have an idea when that would be presented?
Which, which strip mall?
Well, I don't know. If, if, we've given it a name, which I, I don't remember, but it's the one on Young Street.
On Wheel?
Yes, yes. Yes, that would be the one. Thank you.
I, I believe the CEO gave out that information at one point, but we can, I'm sure we can get it again. Ms. Wayne Roy Van Castle, can you get them? I, I know that it was in, I think you mentioned it was in our budget about how much.
We can gather that information, send it to council.
Perfect. But I think it was in the budget, was it not?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, it is part of the budget.
Yeah, it was part of the budget, Counselor, but we'll, we'll get staff, we'll get that information for you.
Thank you. That was income and expenses. Thank you. Sometimes for all of us in residence, it's, we have such a huge budget. I would appreciate if it was on the council agenda. Thank you. I don't know if this, this couldn't be new business. Are we going to do public service announcements, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, we are. That's what we do at committee of the whole.
I don't really think this is either, so I'll wait then.
Okay, I'm moving to public service announcements. So, Counselor Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to express, I guess, on behalf of council the sad news of the death of your father. That was a wonderful picture of him when I assumed he was in the army. A nice young man and this picture of the two of you as well. So, as I said in my note, I wish you, wish you peace and pleasant memories. And the other thing I would like to say is I'm just beginning my twenty-second year on council. And I could hardly believe that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Reese, PSA?
Just a reminder, I know it'll come up by the end of this month, but on January thirty-first is the event that the Royal Black Caucus, Royal Black Community has to kick off Black History Month. So I reached out to Mrs. Durant about giving her, giving me some more information about it. I know it's a flag raising and I think there's a ceremony afterwards, but I don't know much more about it. So she didn't get, get back to me, as they say in the business, by deadline. So I'll just put, ask people to put that on their calendars. I'll just, uh, put, ask people to put that on their calendar should they wish to join in. I believe it's going to be at Town Hall starting at six o'clock between six and eight with the flag raising and some other stuff that goes on that they do every year.
Thank you. That's it? That's it? Counselor Thompson, PSA? Counselor Kim?
Um, Counselor Gardner did bring it up. So I, I'll just say, uh, I want to thank everyone for their messages and the entire community. Thank you very much.
Out for adjournment. Counselor Thompson, Counselor Gallo, all those in favor? Post that carries, where adjourned? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.